I'll roll with it.
Okay, thank you very much for being here this afternoon, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the Richland County Planning Commission, meeting on April 4th, 2022. Thank you all for being here. Staff of you would please confirm the following. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, a copy of the agenda was sent to the news media persons requesting notification and posted on the bulletin board located in the county administration building. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna talk through some preliminary stuff. I'm gonna try to explain the best I can, you know, where we are with the meeting and the agenda as we move ahead. As a reminder, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to county council as to whether to approve or deny zoning map amendments. County council will conduct its own public hearing and take official votes to approve or deny these map amendment requests on a future date to be published by the county. Council typically holds zoning public hearings on the 4th Tuesday of the month. Please check the county's website for updated agendas, dates, and times. Please take note of the following guidelines for today's meeting. Turn off or silence any cell phones or pagers. Audience members may quietly come and go as needed. We got a good number of people here today, so sheriff's deputy did ask me to remind folks to please avoid congregating along that back wall. Applicants are allowed up to two minutes to make statements. Citizens signed up to speak are allowed up to two minutes each. Redundant comments, please minimize those. Only addressed remarks to the commission, and don't expect the commission to respond to questions from the speakers in a back-and-forth style. That's just not what the purpose of today's meeting is. And please, no audience or speaker interchanges, exchanges. No audience demonstrations or other disruptions to the meeting are permitted, nor are comments from anyone other than the speaker at the podium. Please remember, the meeting is being recorded. Please speak into the microphone and give your name and address. We've got two podiums, one on each side here, and you're welcome to use either one. Abusive language is inappropriate, will not be tolerated. Please don't voice displeasure or frustration at a recommendation as the Planning Commission is still conducting business. If you have any questions or concerns, you may contact the Richland County Planning Department staff. And now onto Agenda Item 3. Are there any motions for additions to or deletions from the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes. Crooks.
The applicant has requested a deferral for case number 22-006 MA. Wanted to bring note to that.
Okay, thank you. I also wondered whether there was a motion to defer the neighborhood pre-application meeting discussion, but the chair will entertain a motion.
I moved.
The motion on the floor is to amend the agenda to remove case 22006 MA and to defer discussion on the neighborhood pre-application meetings. Is that correct?
Chairman, I may.
Yes.
Just to make sure I heard staff correct, was that a staff deferral or did the applicant choose to defer it, Mr. Crooks?
Yes, sir, Mr. Gilchrist, the applicant did so staff was going to...
I'm sorry.
Because the applicant requested it, but it fell within that window with the agenda that had already gone out. Staff wouldn't have been able to administer the defer, which is why we're having to defer via the additions and deletions.
Thank you, Mr. Crooks.
All right, thank you. So, did I get the motion right, Mr. Grady?
Yes, to remove consideration of case 22-006, which has been withdrawn, and to defer action on the neighborhood pre-application meeting criteria.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Taylor. If the staff would take a vote on that motion, please.
All right, roll for roll call vote. Yonki.
Aye.
Carlisle.
Aye.
Fryerson. Not here. Metz.
Aye.
Branham.
Aye.
Grady.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Gilchrist.
Aye.
Dennis.
Aye.
unanimous vote carries.
All right, motion carries, thank you. Item 4. The chair notes that individuals are signed up to speak on case 22-001 MA. As such, the chair will entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda so that these cases are, that case is removed from the consent agenda, and the commission will hear public input on it today.
Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to pull case number 22001 MA for public participation and discussion.
All right, we have a motion, second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Yonki, seconds. Staff, please take a vote on that motion.
All right, to approve the consent agenda as amended. Roll call vote. Yonki.
Aye.
Carlisle.
Aye.
Metz.
Aye.
Branham.
Aye.
Grady.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Gilchrist.
Aye.
Dennis.
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Again, just to be clear, the road names that were a part of the consent agenda, that was the one remaining consent agenda item, so by that motion, they are approved. All right. We move ahead to case 22-001 MA. And again, ladies and gentlemen, I'll try to give some introductory remarks as to where we are in the process, and then also give staff an opportunity to present the information that they may want to. So, last year, staff presented a proposal, a proposed full replacement of the land development code. After review by this commission and some modifications to the draft along the way, county council voted to adopt the new replacement code. Included in the new land development code is a new set of zoning districts. Every parcel of land in the county that is not inside a city or town has a zoning designation assigned by the county. With the adoption of this new code, each parcel must be assigned a new zoning designation. County staff prepared a draft map. The draft map is now available for public viewing via the county's website. Numerous informational meetings throughout the county have also been conducted by county staff. And every application to amend the zoning map comes to the Planning Commission for review. Due to the high levels of public interest and the broad impact of this case, the commission determined to provide opportunity for public input, not just at our March regular meeting, but also at today's regular meeting. Today, we will hear public comments up until around 5:30 PM. This case is set on today's meeting agenda as one on which the commission is scheduled to take action. In this process, the commission serves as a recommending body to county council. So ultimately, our vote will be that of one to make one or more recommendations to council. Council will then perform its own independent review of the draft zoning map. Council will provide an opportunity for public input at one of their meetings prior to voting on it. Council's vote is the official binding vote as to whether the draft zoning map is adopted. The draft map is subject to change during the process prior to being adopted by council. If you do not feel that you need to speak to the commission today but are simply seeking information about how the draft zoning map would impact your property or those immediately around your property, members of the Planning Commission staff are available to speak with you right now downstairs on the first floor of this building at the Planning Department's counter. And thank you for your patience. I hope that information was helpful. And before we receive public input, staff, would you like to present any updated information on the draft zoning map?
Yes, sir. So as we mentioned at the work session on Friday, so we were looking to make some additional changes to our recommendation based on some additional feedback. We did do that, and those are, that is posted now on the viewer. If it's not there, it's still in the process of being loaded. There were a handful of changes that we looked at, particularly to an area between Dutch Fork Middle along Old Tama to Kinderly Road, probably about seven or so properties looking at the rezoning or recommendation to RT. There was one property near Jabe and Two Notch, originally being recommended for EMP. Looking at recommending that for RC instead. And then recommendation for, I think, one or two properties south of Eastover, going from AG to, I believe, RT. And those would have been the only other potential changes to the recommendation beyond what was made previously.
Okay. Right.
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gilchrist.
So, question for the staff. Those changes that were made to the land development code, were they in response to what we heard during the public input session a few days ago?
So, in terms of staff's recommendation, so what is there now? So, yes, so the, as staff's recommendation changed from the prior meeting to, I think it was Monday of last week when the new, yes. So a lot of that has been based on the feedback that we've been hearing, not just at this meeting, but also at the various meetings, as well as phone calls, emails, letters that we have been receiving throughout this process, based on that feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else, just kind of preliminarily, before we hear from the public? All right. I will go ahead and proceed with public input. Mr. Vice Chair, if you would please call the name of the first person who signed up. Reminder to each speaker, you have two minutes to speak, and you should state your name and address before you begin.
All right, I'm gonna give this a shot. If I butcher your name, I am very sorry. But 20 years in the military, I've done it a lot, so. First off, we have Lisa Borden. Borden?
Like the cow or the milk. No relation.
Staff, would you please keep time for us?
My name is Lisa Borden. I live at 116 Rideout Point Road, Ermo, South Carolina. Set timer for two minutes. The citizens of Richland County are fighting for democracy and the right to address growth, development, economic issues, health issues, and safety issues in our communities. We are speaking out for on the quality of life on behalf of ourselves, our children, and our grandchildren. The county commissioners are responsible for protecting our community, its health, safety, and environment, and implementing the will of the people expressed by our votes. The Planning Commission has been appointed by the commissioners to fulfill this responsibility to the citizens of Richland County. The citizens of this county have spoken loudly through petitions, emails, phone conversations, one-on-one meetings, and public hearings that we do not support the massive rezoning of our county to increase density. Changing 78% of the county zoning from RU, Rural District, to more intense development is not what the citizens of this county want. Of the six residential zoning districts, only residential one limits development to one single-family detached dwelling per lot. Every other residential district, R2 to R6, permits four-family dwellings, three-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, family group homes, and single-family detached homes. Now, the planning staff explained to me that this is not multifamily housing, but even a kindergartner knows that 4, 3, 2 are more than one, which is the definition of multi. The proposed zoning map will destroy single-family neighborhoods that are not in HOAs in unincorporated Richland County. Mayor Frank Brunson of Forest Acres took a strong and successful position in support of his citizens to preserve their quality of life. All the residential areas in Forest Acres were changed to R1, one single-family dwelling per lot. The planning staff are recommending that you pass the proposed zoning map. Please listen to the citizens of this county uphold democracy and deny this immense increase of density for our county. It is time to rework this document with quality of life and economic development being considered as equal partners. Good, smart growth is a goal we can all buy into.
Please hold your applause, everyone, please hold your applause. We need to try to make sure we get everybody heard that wants to be heard in the time we have.
All right, we have Pam Selkine-Halls.
Hi, I'm Pam Selkine-Halls, and I reside at 1944 Marina Road, Ermo. Marina Road and surrounding residents in the Ballantyne area are adamantly opposed to the county's rezoning plan. These 948 signatures petition the county to continue as currently zoned and continuance of our single-family designation. The only zoning that is single-family appears to be R1. In alliance with Johnson's Marina Road petition, we have approximately 1,344 signatures requesting the same. Many more signatures are being added every day. Furthermore, I would like to add that these signatures were not gathered via the internet. We met and discussed this issue personally with each and every one of these citizens. We took the time to do this, not on the internet. Please don't be fooled by the developers and their cries about first-time home buyers. This rezoning is all about the developers filling their pockets with money at the expense of Richland County, its taxpayers, and our already overburdened infrastructure. In closing, the lifelong American dream of homeownership is owning a single-family home. It's not about owning a duplex or a triplex in rural areas of this county. Please do not allow the developers to ruin our county and our way of life just so they can get rich. Thank you very much. I'd like to submit these ongoing.
Yeah, Tommy, or one of the staff, would you please take that?
They're ongoing, thank you.
Thank you, all right.
Next, we have Melinda Ray.
Hey, my name is Melinda Ray. I reside at 105 Shell Cracker Court, Ermo, South Carolina. When I initially found out about this, I was very shocked and very upset. I am a realtor, and I understand the meaning of rules, designation, and R1 and all of that. That's what I do. I've done it since 2014, and I love where we live. I think everybody in this room loves where they live. And I happened to go back and review some of the zoning ordinance that we had been using until recently as it's beginning to turn more gray. We used to say that it was, our ordinances were defined as to promote and protect public health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity, and general welfare of the community. And in some of the past planning acts, it also stated that a local government must reasonably consider the following purposes were applicable. Number one, to include preventing land overcrowding, avoid undue concentration of population, and lessen street congestion. Your plan promises to give us more congestion without considering the overcrowded roads that you have refused to address and solve. Your plan of the goal of zoning should be to help create a convenient, attractive, and harmonious community. This new plan does not create a convenient and harmonious community as we watch you take away our land and not sure whose interests we're promoting. It's certainly it and us. I mean, we've been so proud of Richland County all of our life, and now here, we're hearing this? It just, it's hard. And I appreciate all the work and all the fine people that I've got to know through this process, and we hope y'all will do what you're supposed to. Thank you.
Once again, please hold your applause. We have David Cathar.
I'm Dave Cathar from Blythewood, 1912 Lorik. I've never done this before, this is the first time.
You'll be fine.
And I read in the paper the other night, over the weekend about all this, so this is all new to me. I moved here from Detroit, like I said, six years ago, and everybody's talking about this great time in Blythewood, old country town. In fact, people refer to it as a strip of land connected Columbia to Ridgway. So, I bought it, I bought, I got chickens, I got an orchard, I got a cornfield. I wanted to have riding stable to horses. I plan to retire in five years. And from my understanding, from what the article said anyways, I'm not allowed to have riding staples, I'm not allowed to have horses, I'm not allowed to have my chickens, you know? And the neighbor next door's got steers, he's got pigs, you know, is he in the same boat? And then over on Swagert Road, 234 acres, Mongo Homes, they're supposed to build a big old subdivision. Blythewood's getting swallowed. You know, I started watching this show on TV, it was called Yellowstone, and I'm watching this poor guy from Montana, and he's got this cattle ranch been generations and generations. You know, and the kind of, the stories I hear about Blythewood in South Carolina, generations and generations of families have just, had land, and now it's, their rights being taken away. And the article in the paper says I can have a variance. Well, I don't want a variance. I want to maintain what I have right now, my zoning right now. So in five years from now, I can build a stable, I can ride those horses. This is what I wanted to do, and this is all new to me. So, I really don't know what to say. I ain't got to be a labored speecher like that. But I recommend either postpone this for 30 years, I won't be around no more. If you can't recommend denial, just postpone it. But we don't need these new zoning rules.
Thank you for being here.
I appreciate your time.
Stick around.
All right, we have Virginia Tansel.
Virginia Tansel, 6401 Winyard Drive, 29203. Denny Terrace is the perfect blend of seclusion and community. Its city convenience and country charm, I want to keep it that way. Section 629510 of the South Carolina Comprehensive Plan Act only asks to update or revise, not necessarily change, zoning. It states that a local comprehensive plan be done, including housing that protects health, safety, welfare of residents. Section 629710 states zoning ordinances must guide development in accordance with existing and future needs, promoting health, safety, morals, order, appearance, general welfare, preventing overcrowding, avoiding undue concentration of population. Cramming families together to save green space is unwise. Today, folks are ruled by their feelings, and they tote guns. And the people, not the guns, are the problem. The county fails to keep landlords accountable now. Can't even keep up with solid waste picked up, or worse, more people. The South Carolina Act also says zoning must be made in accordance with a local comprehensive plan. Denny Terrace repeatedly asked but was denied that. We have been shown no good reason why our historic community now needs to be divided into two or three zones. I object and respectfully commit request that R1 for all of our community be the zoning, not subject to cluster or zero lot line development. Thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you.
All right, we have Jennifer Manke.
My name is Jennifer Manke, and I live at 320 Clearview Drive, Hopkins, South Carolina. When I was in high school, I was a recent transplant from Massachusetts, and my friends and I got, went through our kitchen drawers and pulled out all the keys and mailed them from Sumter to Columbia to the State House, saying you are the key to save the swamp. That was a long time ago, I hate to think how long ago it was. But you also are the key to saving the swamp because I went to Congry National Park today and walked through the parking lot and wrote down 29 states license plates, plus a couple from France and two from Ontario. And I am here to speak for those people who come to see our national park, of which we're not proud enough, we're not tourists in our own area, many of us have never been there. But 29 different states were represented, only four empty parking places in the whole park. And it was nine from North Carolina, four from Illinois, two from New York, one from Colorado, nine from Georgia, three from Massachusetts, three Ohio, one Utah, 12 from South Carolina, thank God, four from New Jersey, thank God, four from New Jersey, three from Indiana, one was a motorcycle, two from California, three from Iowa, four from Florida, two from Ontario, one Oklahoma, nine Virginia, four Pennsylvania, one Maine, one Kentucky, one Rhode Island, one Arkansas, one Wisconsin, three Maryland, three Texas, one South Dakota, one Mississippi, three Michigan, one Maryland, one New Mexico. I spoke at length with the people from France who said they were having trouble parking their rented RV. They didn't know where they were going to go besides Walmart. I'm speaking today to say, please, in your deliberations and in your recommendation to city council, don't forget the tourism plan.
Thank you, ma'am.
The things that you are doing are negating the tourism plan and I don't want you to do them until you take the tourism plan into consideration.
All right, ma'am, that's your time. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Donna Cole.
Good afternoon, commission and staff. My name is Donna Cole. I reside at 209 Aminity Road in Chapin, South Carolina, 29036. I am here to present the Johnson Marina Road and surrounding residents within Chapin, White Rock, and Ballantyne who are adamantly opposed to the Richland County's rezoning plan. Our infrastructure is already inadequate to support the density that already exists and there doesn't seem to be any effort in trying to improve what we have now. This includes water pollution, sewer issues, congested traffic, and increased crime. These 396 signatures petition to continue density as currently zoned with the continuance of true single-family housing. In alliance with the Marina Road petition, we presently have approximately 1,344 signatures requesting the same. Our petition is stated on each signature page. Thank you for listening to this plea.
Thank you.
Christina Knaus.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Christina Knaus and I live at 3406 Over Creek Road in the northeast area near Forest Acres. I'm one of those areas that is an unincorporated lot surrounded by Forest Acres. We are currently zoned for R1 and this code would change us to R3 or as what I was understood, might change us to R2. But that would still allow for multifamily dwellings and manufactured homes in our neighborhood. My family's been on this property for 54 years. My parents bought it and bought the house because they wanted single-family zoning and I'm here to tell you that the other people in my neighborhood want to keep it family zoning. Not only to keep our property values intact and our natural resources, but I've got to tell you, the infrastructure for our neighborhood cannot take any more density. Our roads are failing right now. We're serviced by City of Columbia Water that is 4,000 work orders behind. Our schools are overcrowded, there's traffic jams. Richland County EMS that serves us is having a personnel and equipment crisis and we've had a crime problem. Do you know that in the past five years, there have been six people shot to death within a 10-minute walk of my house? So obviously, law enforcement is being challenged. So I'm begging you to let us stay R1 and please let us keep our single-family zoning and please deny this land code the way it's written because it's going to be a negative effect on rural areas too. And the final thing is, I had somebody from the county tell me at a meeting that there was a calendar that needed to be met. Let me tell you something, there shouldn't be a deadline when you are dealing with the lives and livelihoods of people. It is your responsibility to do what's right for the people you serve and not do what's right by a calendar or a clock. You need to think about lives and livelihoods instead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie Tweed.
My name is Leslie Tweed and I'm with the Ballantyne Civic Association or Community Association. I've delivered a package to each of you because it's a lot easier to put it all in writing. You have to get 10 with 500 pages of things and all times and codes, commercial, et cetera. We focused on all the things that actually create an issue for the homeowner. This is a single-family home area. Anything west of Route 6 and south of 76 are peninsulas that jut out into the lake. And as it states in the paperwork there, you'll see that there are single roads going in and out. This density idea that staff works with because it's for the big picture, but the problem is it doesn't take into consideration also population. You know, if you go and take our properties and turn them into R2s, which the whole peninsula of Marina Road is, except for they even put R3s at the end, you're talking about taking an area and if you have a home there and you got two cars, fine and all that, but they're, they're going to increase it, that that could be like three duplexes. So now you got six families there. None of the, the schools are maxed out. 90% of everybody's on a well, 90% of everybody because there's no city water. And there are all on septic tanks in the lead system which a 30-year-old pipe holds, a six-inch pipe is supposed to take any excess waste away and it can't handle it on rainy days now. So if you go increase the amount of families, you're going to increase the population by a huge amount and this type of infrastructure does not work. Single roads that go up and down Johnson Marina Road and in Shadowwood and everything, if you have all this additional traffic, one accident high up on Marina Road will block a few thousand people from even getting out. They can't get EMS, you couldn't get fire, you can't get to work, can't, the students can't go to school. So I'm asking you to add something to this. Either, you have three choices. Make us R1, that's as close as we can get, because R2, as it states, the exact things from your code book.
Easy to finalize now, Mr. Tweed.
Okay. That you give us an opportunity to plead for something for this zone, which is so sensitive to the lake.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right. Jeanette Robinson.
My name is Jeanette Robinson. I live at 1170 Hollis Pond Road and I'm a fourth-generation owner of the property that I reside on. My family, matter of fact, I still go up and down the same dirt road. My ancestors went up in horse and buggy when they farmed that road. Quite interesting some days when it rains. We love our rural community. I stood before, probably not all you guys, but 22 years ago, begging, begging this county to have some vision, to not allow the density that has been crammed down our throats. I'm not anti-development in any means, but I am for smart growth. And what smart growth looks like to me is being respectful of the homes and the community and the people who have supported and been the cornerstone of this very county. Those of us that own rural land and live on rural land, and I'm curious of all you sitting up here before me, how many of you live on rural property? Nobody. You know, I, I-
We're not answering your questions, okay?
Okay, and I respect that and I can do my own research, but that perplexes me because, you know, we have supported this community, we have been here, we have, you know, watched our taxes go up, watched our roads collapse, watched our schools, watched all of our emergency services. And at the same time, it's like, to me, the message being sent is the rural voice is no longer wanted or it's no longer needed. We no longer would have a voice when developers come before you to rezone for high density. We no longer have a voice to come up here and show our concern. To me, let's look at how do we make what we have better? Maybe developers should start setting aside land to farm, to teach the communities how to come together, teach our children how to grow our food. There is a different way, there's a better way. And I think that there's a lot of smart people sitting in this room and it just cannot be about the overgrowth because we are getting hammered where I live. And I live very close to where the Mongo Development's going in. So I beg you, I implore you to deny this or if you cannot deny it for whatever reason, to please defer it so we can continue to have open, creative conversation to keep Richland County a great place to live. Because if this happens, it's really not a great place to live. It's being told what we have to do to appease somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Everhart.
My name is Brad Everhart. I live at 10 Morning Star Court. I also have a State Farm Insurance Office at 1530 Dutch Fork Road in Ermo. The Lake Murray situation that Les talked about, we're not, it can't handle much more as far as you got one way in, one way out, all the way up through Lake Murray, through Marina Road, through Johnson Marina Road. There's a lot, a lot of different roads going back up through it and it cannot handle much more growth. The sewer systems can't handle much more, the water systems cannot handle much more. The roads can't handle much more. R1 looks like it's going to be the only way to keep things from just getting completely out of hand in this county. So please consider this. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Don Ald.
Hey, my name's Don Ald. I'm 4617 Oakwood Drive, Forest Acres Area 29206. Apologize, I'm probably going to be the least articulate person up here, so y'all just bear with me. I'm opposed to what's going on here with the elimination of single-family zoning in Richland County. R2, R3 are what we're going to and both of these allow multifamily housing. I mean, there's, there's a little bit of disingenuousness when county is telling us that these are not multifamily, but they are. It's duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes. These are all multiples of one. This is all multifamily. The way the county went about this and passed this legislation without anyone knowing about it is just disheartening. You're going to destroy our property values. You're going to create more traffic, you're going to introduce more crowding into our schools, you're going to increase incidents of crime, and you're going to further overload our utilities. Most common opinion, I've talked to people all over the county, the most common opinion that I have is that of disdain for what the county is doing and how they've gone about it. It's almost as if they've tried to sneak it through without public, public notice. I don't think this is going to happen now, the public seems to be very aware of it.
Please hold your applause and let the man speak.
But when we complain about it, we complain the 3R is going to allow multifamily housing. Well, the common solution from county representation is, well, we can rezon you as 2R. But that still allows multifamily zoning. I mean, it just shows the county representation just does not get it. The problem is multifamily housing. The problem is that you've eliminated multifamily, single-family housing in the county and that's just, just not acceptable. It's going to destroy this county. Only thing I can ask is that y'all revisit the code and eliminate the single, the multifamily allowance from the code. R2 and R3, just take it out. It's an easy fix.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Fred Ange.
My name's Fred Ange. I live at 516 South Woodrow Street in Columbia, South Carolina. I also own a home at 201 Jesse Derrick Road, Ermo, South Carolina, in the Dutch Fork community. I first learned of this when I received what looked like a tax bill with a note that says this is not a tax bill. Before that, I received no other communication, either by phone, US mail, email, did not see any signs in the affected areas of the county notifying residents of your intentions. Information was not provided in other languages, meaning these communities might even know what you're trying to do. Hispanics and Asians make up 8.3% of the county's population, 8.5% of residents do not have a high school diploma, and 16% live below the poverty line. These people may not even know what you intend to do to them. My lot is an acre and a half and other lots in my neighborhood range from 1 to 10 acres with an average size of 3 acres. Your proposal to change our zoning from rural to R3 shows a lack of understanding of the community and how these properties are used. For comparison, an R3 zoning allows four houses on a lot the size of a football field. Additionally, you have not provided me with information on how the neighboring properties are going to be rezoned. I saw your proposed map on your website. It's a joke, it lacks any meaningful detail and I have a right to know what the proposed zoning is for nearby properties. I asked the county downstairs in the planning commission what the zoning was and was told I had to fill out a Freedom of Information Act request. What are you trying to hide? Kennelly Road has a traffic count comparable to Harbison Boulevard. Its mixed-income neighborhoods has pedestrian traffic walking to the grocery stores. It's also narrow-winding and has no shoulder. The areas are a frequent source of accidents and fatalities which will be made worse by increasing population density. The state newspaper reported that South Carolina ranks 48th out of 50th in quality of education. According to LR5 School District, six schools are at capacity and two have a freeze on new enrollment. Contributing to the existing problem by increasing population density and forcing children to commute to schools outside their neighborhoods is irresponsible and shows a lack of care. Homes in my particular neighborhood operate off wells and septic tanks as public water and sewer lines stop at Kingston Forest. My property is-
Okay, sir, if you could go ahead and wrap up.
Okay, I'll wrap up. I grew up in Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm planning to move back to Raleigh, North Carolina. Somebody asked me the difference between Raleigh, North Carolina and Richland County. I said Raleigh, North Carolina is featured on Glover listed. Richland County is featured on Live PD.
Thank you, sir.
Elena Schaefer.
My name is Helena Schaefer. I reside at 212 Magnolia Bluff Drive and that's in Lake Carolina, northeast Columbia, 29229 zip code. I'm actually here as a resident and also as a legislative advocate for AARP senior issues. The things that have struck me about this whole situation is I did not find out, I could not find out based on your maps and your codes where my, our housing fit into all of this, was anything going to be changed, where, you know, what goes on? Your maps, as one person mentioned, are basically illegible. You go on the map, you go into the website, you get to the map, you plug in your address and it brings you to an area that has writing over the top of the map. You can't see what's in there unless you can enlarge it so much that you can actually find streets. Again, it becomes impossible to understand. I made a phone call today and I was informed that Lake Carolina is not going to be touched. It's an established community. However, when you live in Lake Carolina, you live, you come and go through Hardscrabble Road entrance. And Hardscrabble Road on our side, and forgive me, I'm challenged when it comes to direction, just across the street, whether, I believe it's west, but I'm not sure. When you're coming out of that main entrance to Lake Carolina, you realize that you're taking your life in your hands. They're in the process of expanding the number of lanes of Hardscrabble Road and in effect, it will be five and six lanes depending upon turning pieces and so on. First and foremost, it's a safety hazard if you're adding housing to the area. And I will tell you that when we come out of Lake Carolina across Hardscrabble, the building that's going on there now, the home construction that's going on there now, it is happening so fast and so furious and yet and still, it's well-hidden.
Your time has expired. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Matt Neese.
Hey, can you all hear me? Can you hear me? Perfect. Thank you for, thank you so much for the chance for public input on this. My name is Matt Neese. I'm at 825 Cross Hill Road, near Fort Jackson. I'm a Richland County resident, proud Richland County resident, but more importantly, I'm here in my capacity as policy coordinator for Carolina Farm Stewardship Association. We're a two-state nonprofit member-based. We serve and advocate for small and medium-sized family farms- We serve and advocate for small and medium-sized family farms throughout both Carolinas, including here in Richland County. In fact, our members here in Richland County alerted us to this rezoning a few weeks ago, and these are all farms who are 15, 20, 25-acre, multi-generational farms, who've farmed the same plot of land from Eastover out to Blythewood for the last 100 years, 125, 150 years. And they got a letter in the mail that said that you must be mistaken. This is not a multi-generational, full-time family farm. This is, in fact, a hobby farm. You are no longer a farm. In fact, those 20 pigs you have on your property, those may look like livestock, but they're actually pets. So these ag reclassifications will drive unintentionally small farms out of business. In fact, it's hard to be a farmer, from weather problems to supply chain instability, COVID. It's very difficult. The margins are so small. And they've all made one thing clear to us, and it's that micromanagement on their property and their plots of land will force them to sell their farms, will force them out of business. And in fact, to protect farmers' livelihoods, the state of South Carolina has a law on the books called the Right to Farm Act. And the Right to Farm Act makes it clear that counties and municipalities aren't allowed to implement stricter regulations against, stricter regulations than the state legislature on what you can do on your property. And in fact, to close, you cautioned earlier that this is strictly to recommend to county council what should take place, what action should be taken on this rezone. So this is your chance to protect Richland County Council from the inevitable lawsuits that will come from the small family farms that will sue when they are forced out of business. So we encourage you to not tamper with the existing ag reclassifications, to keep the existing ag reclassifications. Perhaps table this. We can all come to the table and figure out a solution that works for everybody. But as it's written now, this will drive small farms out of business. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder for in the room too, when you're not speaking, county council has enacted this ordinance regarding masks, so we would ask you to wear those. All right, next speaker. I want to say Michael Hagler.
So my name is Michael Hagler. I live at 1529 Elmo boat Terrace, and I'm here representing the 300 residents and my neighbors who live in the Elmo boat Huffman Heights Neighborhood Association. You should have gotten a packet and your information for this meeting from us, and it has a lot more detail that I'm going to be able to cover. And I'm going to try to emphasize things I have not heard mentioned, as you requested. One item is that we feel like these multifamily developments, the burden that has been placed is going to be put on the residents, not on the developers who's wanting to do this. And it seems unfair to put the burden of proof or the burden of defense on fourth-generation neighbors rather than the people who want these high-density multifamily developments. As others have mentioned, many people have been here, fourth-generation, built and moved into these neighborhoods for the purpose of having large lots and peace and quiet. And it doesn't seem, doesn't seem fair to have that background ripped out, the rug ripped out from you by planners and county. What is being proposed will effectively kill single-family neighborhoods. And it's also in our neighborhood being killed by mixed-use development, also being proposed by these maps. Encroachment, Richland County has historically been very protective of neighborhoods against encroachment, not only multifamily but commercial. And so we remind you of that history, and it has protected neighbors. We feel like this is classic encroachment of multifamily development, and in our case, also mixed-use development. Density, we're not against density, we're just against density on the back of single-family neighborhoods. We feel like density could happen in many vacant properties all over the county that wouldn't damage existing single-family residences. But even the density, I think, you know, maybe when this was begun, this research began, there was a trend towards density. We're finding there's a trend toward less density with people moving from New York, New Jersey, Ohio, coming to less-dense neighborhoods. And our neighborhood is very close to town, has been less dense, and we're seeing an uptick in interest.
Sir, that's your time.
And that's what I wanted to say. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Helen Bradley.
Good afternoon. I'm Helen Taylor Bradley. I live at 1916 Martin Luther King Boulevard in Hopkins, South Carolina. No stranger to coming here. I have been coming to county council to different meetings, pleading for our community for close to 45 years. We live in a rural community. We love our community, but then, now that Richland County has gone everywhere it can go, now it's time to come to Lower Richland. But just not Lower Richland. You've hit everybody this time. So it makes me feel good to see all of these people here today, pleading for the same thing. We want to be able to live comfortable in what we've worked for all of our lives. I was, I just read in the paper last week or so, 1,700 homes are going to be put on Lower Richland, on Garnas Ferry Road in Lower Richland, 1,700 in 1.8, 1.8-mile radius on both sides of the highway. If you'd come Garnas Ferry Road and you try to get across from Atlas Road to go over to the daycare, which I try to do every morning to take my grandbaby, I have to wait because the traffic is so congested. So when the light changes, nobody stops because they want to go because they've been sitting there for 40 minutes trying to get across. So if you bring all of that, those more houses plus all of the other developments that are coming down there, we're not going to be able to move. We're going to be at a standstill. The roads, the roads need fixing, trees need cutting. Some of everything that you can mention needs to be done in the Lower Richland area, improved. I sit on the transportation committee, and I have to argue to get them to come to cut the sidewalks so the people be able to use the sidewalks. I have to argue to get them to come and cut the limbs across the road that pose a threat to people's lives. They have not, they cannot fix what is going on in the county now. So why add more burdens? Let those developers go someplace else. They've already maxed out Richland County. We want to live comfortable. Thank you.
Marie Knight.
I'm Marie Knight, and I live at 1005 Brighter Ridge Road. It's an Ermo address, but we're in the rural area, close to the Dutch Fork High School and a lot of development that has gone on. I've been before county council several times in the past when large-density neighborhoods first came to our area. We are, thought we were a little protected area in this. We moved there 35 years ago. It was developed into acreage of, it started out three to five acres, but some on the front, the developer allowed to be split, so they're like two acres. We are requesting that we stay rural. We have single-family homes. We have people that have animals on their property. We have a restricted covenant, which I had to search for the, to make sure it was registered. It is registered, and it doesn't allow any more development on these lots, which your zoning will. And I was told that our, we could take our covenants and go to court and fight for our rights, and I think that is terribly wrong. The intersection of the interstate there, 97 exit, if you've been out that way headed toward Chapeau, and you realize the development of that that is going on. There's going to be one exit for people to come off of. And from Coon Road on out, those people that live, they could exit earlier, but they're not providing for that. So I see that South Carolina DOT does not work with the local developers. We have all complained. We have said you need more exits. They're going to all come off of one exit and go right by our development. We now can hardly get in and out. The traffic is awful, and it's, the trees have all been cut in between the interstate and close to our property, so it's, it's very noisy.
Okay, Ms. Knight, thank you very much. That's your time.
Okay. I just want to say one more thing, that the county said they were promoting public health, safety, morals, convenience, order, appearance, prosperity, and general welfare. And I don't think that's taking place. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have Clifford Myers.
Hi, my name is Cliff Myers, and I live at 413 Old Love Road in Hopkins, South Carolina. And the, I have a form that I requested, a written statement that should be submitted in, for public records, please.
Yes, if staff would please.
Today's agenda, excuse me, today's consent agenda, item number 4B2, should be removed from the consent agenda and subject to decisions. We believe our new destination in this purpose map, proposed map amendment will damage the uncooperative rural areas of Richland County for generations to come. Specifically, some of those proposed new zoning districts will result in very negative downzoning that will desperate, despise, deprive landowners and their children of the property rights. We believe the proposed map amend contains downzoning are detrimental for five reasons. The purpose of downzoning will encourage additional population decrease in Richland County. The proposed downzoning will make Richland County third of the big three South Carolina counties in less than one generation. The proposed downzoning will make an economic burden in Richland County because they will dramatically reduce the potentials for population growth in the area where the county has invested millions in water and sewage infrastructure. The purpose downzoning, the proposed downzoning will immediately decrease the value of landowners and will suffer from immediate change for the simple requirement of a 3/4 acres to a new home being developed has to be three acres for each new home. In this, families could not subdivide five-acre tract for themselves and two children. They could only consist, construct one home. This restricts no progress.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. That's your time. Thank you for being.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir.
But it's depriving us of quite a bit in Richland County. Thank you.
We have Ted Myers.
My name is Theodore Myers. I'm D. My resident is 7758 Bluff Road in Gadsden, South Carolina. And I'm here because I would like to speak for some of the ministers in our area. I pastor church on Congary Road in Gadsden. We represent a pretty fair congregation. And I think that in my communication with other ministers, we find it very difficult to find any of our congregants who are willing to think that this proposal is a positive one. One of the reasons is that family members have been in these areas for quite some time, and they treasure the idea of being able to pass land on to their children. Many of them, you'll find communities like Myers Town, where the grandfather, some years ago, left property to his children. And today, his grandchildren have formed a wonderfully, beautifully working community right there in that rural area. What are we asking for? We're not asking for the conglomeration of a lot of traffic and freedom to just do anything. We're asking that we look at what is needed in developing this area and allowing this area to have growth, positive growth, for the future. Our schools are presently undergoing a number of people who are dropping out. People are moving to other areas. Young people are not building in our area. We must have reason to bring them back and allow our schools to grow rather than our schools decline. We are currently in a position in the Gadsden and the Eastover area of seeing our schools fall into, what, depopulation because people are moving out. We ought to have an opportunity to have people come back and build a home instead of saying three acres currently.
Thank you very much.
It's 3/4, but we would suggest either 3/4 or 1/2.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Andrea Johnson.
Andrina Johnson, 3555 Old Eastover Road, Eastover, South Carolina, 29044. The proposed downzoning will encourage additional population decreases in Richland County. Recent census data indicates that unlike Charleston, Greenville, and Lexington Counties, Richland County experienced negative growth. That is, fewer people moved into the county than the number who moved out. We believe the proposed downzoning would drive the numbers exiting Richland County sharply upward and continue this negative trend. Indeed, nothing in the new land development code encourages new growth in areas that have seen significant population decline, like areas in District 10 and District 11. This negative population growth already has led to the loss of one South Carolina house seat in this area. We believe that if current trends continue and the downzoning is indeed implemented, it will result in the loss of schools as well. Currently, landowners and their children can build on family tracks so long as each home has 2/3 acres of land dedicated to it alone. This regulation was necessary when private wells and septic tanks alone were the only infrastructure available. However, large areas of Richland County have recently seen the deployment of water and sewer infrastructure. We see no need for more rather than less available land being dedicated to private wells and septic tanks where they are no longer in use. This land code proposal immediately makes it impossible for children of parents owning five acres of land, for example, to build a second house in that expensive acreage. Where then will they live? Perhaps Lexington or Kershaw Counties, where such burdensome downsizing has not occurred. We see no logic in our capital county, Richland County, adopting reckless policies that will reduce its population and political power for the next generation. We urge the council to reject this code change. Thank you.
It would be Enzie at 1640 St. Gordon Place. Marla Jackson.
Good afternoon. I'm Marla Jackson, and I live at 4722 Old Leesburg Road, Hopkins, South Carolina. My parents purchased this property in 1962, so I've lived out there the majority of my life. I acquired the property in 2004. It's a 6.7-acre property where I have a farm with horses, other livestock, barns, buildings. All of my neighbors next to me, they pretty much have the same type of acreage. We're farm-like. We're farmland and we went from rural to R two. There's also a housing development plan to be put behind us. I think in that case, the developers should have to put up some kind of barrier for protection for, so we can remain rural. We live, moved out there to live in the country. My neighbors moved out there to live in the country. I live on a dirt road. I'm constantly pulling people out that get in wrecks on the dirt road when they overexaggerate the running down the dirt road and thinking they can control it. True story. I think my area should be HM at least for Homestead or squash it all together and leave us as a rural community because that's what Hopkins has always been. And I live in the Lower Richland community. Thank you for your time.
Melinda Kelly Finkel?
Good afternoon, I'm Melinda Kelly, I'm with the Finkel Law Firm, twelve oh one Main and also four thousand Faber Place in Charleston. I'm here for two clients. One is Dr. Serbin, Stephen Serbin. And we wanted to just say that we really support the recommendation for that property at seventeen twenty-one Horseshoe. The other client, so we're supporting that, we're very happy about that. The other client is C.L. Corley Lawn and Construction. Mr. Corley is here today, I'm not sure where he ended up getting seated. He's got twelve properties and five were recommended for zoning that we are very happy about, so we really appreciate that. I sent in a letter, wasn't sure if it was put in your packet, so I brought copies today. There are seven pieces that we would like to basically leave the same as what they are now or the same density. So one of them is M one and that is on, excuse me, Monticello Road, fifty-seven thirty-one. And the other one is LI and that's seventy-five twenty-one Fairfield. The other five are all RU now. And in looking at the R two that was recommended, the density jumps, I think in my letter I put threefold, but I think it's actually six. I think it's six units per acre for R three, or, excuse me, R two. And we would ask if you are, if county council is definitely set on getting rid of RU, which we would prefer, that R one would be better so that it wouldn't, because it's very close in density. It allows close to one unit per acre. So it's the density that we're looking at and we would just ask that those five properties stay as is. And those are eighteen twenty Crane Church Road, thirteen sixteen Coily Ford. There's some more vacant land on Crane Church, eighteen twelve Howard Brockington, Hayward Brockington, excuse me, and twelve twenty-eight Cedar Creek. And these range in size from two to twelve acres. So we would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen McDaniel?
Good afternoon, my name is Kathleen McDaniel. I'm an attorney here in Columbia and I'm here on behalf of the Elm, Elmabode Huffman Heights neighborhood. Three points I want to make. One, this process has moved too fast for the neighborhoods and the public to have proper input. Two, there are another, there is another option which has already been suggested to remove the multifamily aspect from R two and R three. That could be done through an amendment to the code that already exists. And then finally, the, there has been some mention of an unfair shift of burden. And what that is, is in this, this situation, you are opening up all of the neighborhoods, well, that's the neighborhoods that I represent, you're opening them up to greater development, which puts the burden on the neighborhood to protect itself every time a developer wants to put in a duplex or a quadruplex. Leave the density as it is. And then that puts the burden on the developer and the market to find those places where those types of housing situations are appropriate. When you put out a policy, you put out a zoning map, that is a reflection of what is the priority of the community, what is the priority of the county. And when the zoning map reflects greatly increased density across the board, especially in what are currently single-family neighborhoods, that shows a priority in that you are putting priority on density and development at the expense of existing neighborhoods. This, my clients only received notice of this middle of February. So we are a month and a half into them even knowing about this. In that time, they have organized the neighborhood, they have hired me as an attorney and I'm not doing this for free. They have had neighborhood meetings, they have met with their county council member, they have, we have met with staff and I have had lots of conversations with GA. They are working as hard as they can to protect their neighborhoods.
All right, thank you, Ms. McDaniel.
What we are asking, what we are asking is that you either defer voting on this today so that there will be additional time for input or simply deny, recommend denial to county council.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gilchrist.
I just want to take a point of personal privilege and, and say hello to Ms. McDaniel. She actually served on the planning commission with us and I had the pleasure of working with her early on, so good to see you.
Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
Evan House? On Indian Summer Point? Pass. Kim Murphy?
Good afternoon, one five four Old Laurel Lane in Chapin. In response to a question asked by one of the commissioners, Mr. Crooks responded that the process began several years ago because folks wanted to have a way of protecting the rural character of the county. I was one of those folks and I support that notion. At the invitation of Mr. Crooks, a group of citizens began having discussions in two thousand and seventeen to advance that notion. I attended one of the first LDC citizens' input meetings here hosted by staff. At the end of the meeting, staff stated that the stakeholder meetings would begin that week. And I thought to myself, well, who are we? Are we not stakeholders? When I asked, I was told county organizations EMS, developers, and I was told that the developers' meeting was not public. So between then and now, and in all of the input meetings and official meetings of council and planning commission that I have seen or attended, there has been no correlation made or directly stated that building standards to protect the rural character would lead to council giving up their right to manage growth across one hundred percent of the county or to be able to weigh in on whether roads and schools and other infrastructure could handle the development. There was no correlation made that building standards would lead to losing the privileges that we as property owners all have now because of a proposed mass rezoning. There was no mention that now multifamily triplexes and quadplexes, which are likely rental units, would be constructed within established neighborhoods or areas that are composed of strictly single-family detached homes. There was no mention that families owning land could no longer carve off a three-quarter acre tract to give to their, an heir. There was no mention that this would lead to a mass rezoning of over a hundred and ten thousand parcels. Staff has worked very hard. The devil's in the details and one of the details that was left off was that council is, is delegating their authority to manage growth to a map.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. I, I appreciate what you're doing and I'd ask that you deny it, keep the current zoning map, take the existing zoning that we have from the two thousand and five code, implement that into the code and update, update those standards, make those good.
Thank you.
Karen Fleck? Frank? I'm, I'm sorry.
My name is Karen Iric.
Iric.
I am, I live at one oh one AC Avenue in Hopkins, the Franklin Park subdivision. Today I stand before you to ask this body to deny remapping of the Lower Richland unincorporated area. I ask that on behalf of my community, Franklin Park. You have a presentation that I didn't realize it couldn't be shown, so they're going to distribute it to you, number one. Number two, I didn't realize, it's been a while since I've been here, that I couldn't come in with a bag, so I took my bag back to my car and left my glasses. So bear with me. I want to say to you as a body, I understand that some of you may have some concern with the trust of the people, trust in you, this body. I ditto everything that everyone here has said, particularly Ms. Bradley. Good to see you, girl. We both live in Lower Richland. In two thousand and five, and here's why you need to be concerned, why we don't trust you. In two thousand and five, the Franklin Park community came before county council asking for clean water. February twenty twelve, we were connected to a water system. October two thousand and five, our then-county council representative for District Ten, somewhere along the line, this sewer thing got into the conversation. We were only asking for clean water. And so when the sewer came up, we automatically said, we don't have a fight in this, we don't have a lagoon in this fight.
All right, Ms., I need you to finalize your comments right now.
All right, so what I'm asking you to do is take into consideration that we were told that a sewer treatment facility was not going to be placed in Franklin Park. Instead, February of this year, February the eleventh, a sewer, the Franklin Park sewer lift station was placed on my street. I live at the beginning of AC Avenue, the lift station is at two twenty-nine AC Avenue.
Thank you very much, your time's up. Thank you.
Please look at the presentation that I made. You need to take into consideration what you're doing to communities. It's not fair to put a sewer lift station on a residential street in a subdivision and you need to make sure that doesn't happen anymore while you're doing this. Please deny.
Thank you for being.
Elizabeth Slayson? Uh, five thirty-two? Hopkins, that may be Harmon, Harmon Road? Anybody here from Harmon Road in Hopkins? That needs to work on their penmanship. All right. Sean Greenwood?
Thank y'all for the time, my name is Sean Greenwood. I'm here representing the city of Forest Acres, I'm the city administrator. We're coming today to ask y'all to, for some procedural stuff, I'm very happy to hear all these people making comments about the various neighborhoods, but procedurally, we think that y'all should recommend council not approve the map and to amend the text to push back the effective date of the current text. Push it back, the, the effective date on, that's on May second. Council has two meetings this week and could get in first of three readings if they move fast. And I think the reason we need to do that procedural process is because the problem is not necessarily with the map itself. As a couple people have said, the problem is with the actual text that's already been approved in November. You have your, your use tables for your various uses and as people have said, you've got R one, that's single-family, and then nothing else is strictly single-family. If you want a single-family small lot designation, R two is not going to get it done. You know, the, in your package, y'all have some letters from the city, from the city council itself, and we wanted to just make sure that y'all understood, taking it from R three to R two is actually worse for us in this case because the R two designation in your text allows for everything R three does and manufactured homes. So R two's actually worse than R three if you're in a single-family residential community, which the entire city of Forest Acres is. So what y'all need and, and what we think needs to be recommended is that the text needs to be amended first because you can't expect the public to give you valid input on a map based on use tables that are flawed. So we are asking that you ask for the text amendment first, get the use tables straightened out, then allow the public to vote on the maps.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom Andrews?
Hey, my name is Tom Andrews, I'm a member of Forest Acres City Council, I'm here with Sean to express some of our opinions. I wish I weren't here, I wish I were at the CLA welcoming Don Staley back, but this is an important issue and so I wanted to be here. We ask that all donut holes in Forest Acres that are unincorporated areas of Richland, Richland County be rezoned as R one, which would be single-family residential. Residents aren't just residents of Forest Acres, but they're also residents of this county, they vote in this county, and they purchased homes with the expectation that they were single-family residential, not duplexes, triplexes, or quadraplexes. We're concerned about the stress that they're going to put on the roads, schools, and resources of our area. Procedurally, I would echo what Mr. Greenberg said, we need to get the use tables straightened out before you vote on this map and I'd encourage you to do that. Ultimately, I don't think this is a lake problem, a rural problem, or a Forest Acres problem. I think it's a use table on a map problem and I think y'all need to make sure those get fixed so the public has adequate time to address them. Thank you.
Henry Martin, Jr.?
Henry Martin, one twenty-four Winding Road in Ballantyne area, and you've heard quite a bit today. I want to, as we've gone through this, one of the things I've tried to do and one of the things I've tried to do in my whole life and I've lived here, I was born in Rosewood, went to school here, went away, but one of the things I've tried to do always as an engineer is you try to explain it to where people can understand it. And if you can't explain something where you can understand it, then the document is flawed, okay?
Mr. Martin, I'm not sure if the microphone's picking you up.
Not picking me up? Okay, you need to have me on the tape here, is that what you're saying?
We want to hear you too.
All right.
Glass in between us.
Well, okay, I can speak louder, but.
That's fine.
But I wanted to say that, oop, that's my time when I was going to have to go, but not my time's up. I wanted to say thank you for these people, I wanted to turn around and say thank you to them because sometimes when we got involved with some of this, with some of the groups, you kind of wondered, because when I first started looking at it, I thought it was a local problem, but it's not a local problem, as he just said. And we're trying not to repeat this stuff. It's a big problem all over and I wanted to make sure other people, so we started messing around and sending stuff out to people and we spread the word that you need to look at this. Because the first thing I said to council when I met Brian and stuff like this is when they did the presentation style that they did, it was just like, here's a map, take a look at it. I'm like, this is all wrong. You got to speak and explain this to us. So number one, I sent them a message to the planning commission, to sit, to the council members, we need to frequently ask questions, we need to have the map redone to show what the comparisons are, okay? Maybe that's too late now because it's been exposed, we need to know what changes has affected you and not just something that comes in the mail that says. that says, "You're now R3." Well, we weren't now R3 because it hadn't passed yet. But it gave you the impression that you was already passed. It was already done. It was past that, you was there. And Jason, when you get on to council, I guess you'll get to hear all of this come again. So how and why did we get here? We never got that answer well. We didn't communicate well. We didn't get answers, I asked about environmental impact to the lake or any other place for the number of homes that's going in there. Well, they do that when they do, the developers do that when they get in there. Bull. Not when they do multiple ones of those. They don't go and look at it all along. So they've never admitted to doing the process.
Chairman, I think we need to call time on this.
Huh?
Here it is.
Yeah.
Am I done?
That's it, Mr. Martin. Thank you very much.
We need to have this delayed or changed, as they said. I agree with that 100%. Thank you very much. Thank you guys for all your input.
Vanessa Patrick?
Hello, I'm Vanessa Patrick. I lived in Pomeria, but I'm a real estate agent and a low-density developer. I know a lot of the people here. Been doing this many years. Spoke to G O. the other day. I get along great with all the staff and listened to everything today and the notes I had prepared. You need to kill the map. The map, as everybody has pointed out, it limits the flexibility. It gets far away from the real procedure of how development works. The text that's already been approved is full of contradictions, issues, errors, as has become abundantly clear. So it should not be crammed in until it can be fixed. I think we all can agree on that from all the viewpoints we have. You can do all the zoning you want to on paper, but the true driver... When I go to develop a piece of land, I look at where is that land? What's the accessibility of public utilities or not? I look at the roads. I look at the shape of the tract. I look at topography. That's what drives how a piece of land is used, not a piece of paper with a map. You look at who's already living there, what the use already is. Those are the factors that should always be looked at and not just this color-coded piece of paper that someone puts out because this just does not apply. It's way too general. It causes conflict across the board. Just a kind of a joke, I mostly do my work in northwest Richland County. That land, if you're not familiar with it, is very hilly and very rocky in most places. I kind of got a laugh because a lot of the parcels that I have subdivided over the years into, let's say, two to eight-acre lots. Now, all of a sudden, you have a seven-acre minimum. And I'm like, "Really?" Because there's so many places that the land, a parcel of land is cut by creeks or cut by hills. So I may need to put three two-acre lots here, but have a 12-acre lot over here. But I can't do that with all these regs. It's just, it doesn't make any sense in practice.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick.
Okay. So once again, kill the map, do a rewrite, and let's make it all make sense. It can make sense. I think you all agree with that.
All right, I cannot read the name very well, so I'm just going to call out the addresses. 8017 Wilson Boulevard?
Uh, my name is Mark. I'm from 8017 Wilson Boulevard, right across the street from the school bus lot. And honestly, it's a little difficult to talk about this without getting, uh, some might say passionate. Angry is a little better. I moved to this country about 20 years ago. It took me about that long to get my citizenship, which I just got about six months ago. And it was a fairly emotional deal. Come from a place where, um, people don't really respect personal freedoms. And here, it's a little bit different. And honestly, it took this 20 years between me and my wife to get the property that we got. We got 84 acres. It's a beautiful piece of land. I mean, I have three creeks. I have, you know, probably 70 acres of forest, and it's gorgeous. I love it. It's rural. Right next to me, there's, uh, the tractor supply on Killian. Just behind, right off the Sharp Road, we have Sal's Old Timey Feed and Seed, which is like a sort of small co-op. We're trying to have like a little vegetable store up front and all that stuff. I have chickens, geese, you know, pigs. And I have two great peonies and all of that stuff. And when I looked at this map with an eye of someone who's... My brother was in highway development. This looked like either... I really don't mean any offense, but it looked like either sheer incompetence or a money grab. And that's what it looked like. Because there's land over there, I mean, like, it's all farmers from where I am, all the way out to Killian Road. Like, donkeys and, you know, horses and all kinds of stuff like... And I, it's really hard not to make this personal because I know that, especially that it involves so many people. I didn't know that it was like everything else. I looked at my own map because that's what I saw and that's what I was angry about. But like, this involves everyone, and the roads are terrible. To the point, they're so bad in South Carolina that the insurance company will just replace your windshield.
Okay, thank you, sir. Your time's up. Thank you.
All right, and lastly...
Just a reminder, if anybody, please, please wear a mask in the county building. That's the county ordinance, okay?
It's not a personal privilege.
Yes.
I'm not trying to be rude. I'm Commissioner Fryerson. I'm 70 years old. The reason I was slightly late, I just left the doctor's office. My sister is 69. I know that you're concerned about these issues, as am I. But there really is a mask mandate. And when you laugh about it, I mean, that's your privilege. But I wrote Commissioner and Chairperson Brannum, Brannum, three times. I went out and spoke to the sheriff's deputy. It's not a laughing matter. Please be kind enough to put on your mask. Please, if you don't care about your health, at least be somewhat concerned about others. Thank you.
And the deputy has masks if you need him. He's walking around right now.
I had mine on, ma'am.
Yeah, I want to encourage all the commissioners to put them on. Obviously, I've been doing a lot more talking, so...
Had mine on the entire time.
All right. If we can get the next name called?
Levi Myers?
Please, please, let's have a order. Let's have a order in the meeting, please.
That take my own personal privilege. Hey, I just want to say, I'm Chris. I live in Lower Richland County. I love this county. I am a fresh face. I've been in this county for 14 years. And I'm just here to volunteer my time. I'm a state employee, okay? I'm here because I love this county and I want to hear from you guys. So let's be positive and helpful. Thank you.
My name is Levi Myers. I live at 431 Oak Bluff Road, Hopkins. And I oppose the new zoning law because I don't think it's fair to the landowners. Now, as far as, I'm not a builder, not a contractor. But my concern is for my children and my grandchildren. I kind of encourage them, if they can, to come home to live. But I don't think it's fair to change the rules that much that they will have to have three acres of land to put one house on because they're not planning to be a builder nor contractor. But when I write down something highway and I look at Burnside Farm, it's awful. And I know I shouldn't have to be punished because of what somebody else does. Give me and my children or grandchildren a right to have a small plot of land that we can live on in peace. I had a rezoning that I had, must be about 30 acres. Rezoning was agriculture use. Under the rezoning, it is no longer agriculture use. And it's nothing but trees on it, and nothing that I can do with it. So I'm asking you, whatever that you can do to fix the situation that has occurred, to please try to fix it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Myers.
That's the last one signed up to speak.
All right. Now that we've completed the public input portion, is there anything that staff wants to add before we open it up to the commissioners for any questions or comments they might have for staff?
So I would say one thing, Mr. Chair. So I think as we discussed at the work session on Friday, we did note that staff will be looking to bring certain text amendments back before y'all. We were looking at potentially the May meeting. Obviously, subject to, you know, any other deferrals or anything else as it relates to that or even with the map itself. But we were looking to bring some of those text amendments back based on a lot of the feedback that we've been hearing, a variety of different things. So anything from uses to development standards to, you know, a variety of different things based on the feedback that we're receiving. So did want to note that, that is something we were planning to bring back before you all. We're looking at the May meeting. But I think as we see what happens with everything else, you know, that ends up where timelines are extended or anything like that, you know, we have a little bit more time. So that way, once we have the, those amendment language proposed, be able to do what we need to with that in terms of any additional meetings or the like as well.
And so you're just saying if the commission proposes amendments to the text that we would, you know, set those on an agenda and then potentially take action on those at a later meeting?
Yeah, if y'all have specific... Yeah, so there's that. I just wanted to note that, as we discussed on Friday at the work session, that we were planning to bring back text amendments to y'all anyway. But if there are other amendments that you all have, then yeah, you would just need to either, you know, vote those up or down. And then once those go, you know, however that motion carries, then we'll look to have that language included and then bring that before you on an additional planning commission meeting.
Okay. Right. I mean, I have comments, but I want to hear from everybody else on the commission that wants to comment or ask their questions.
Chairman, I have, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Gilchrist.
I have some questions, but the first question I want to ask staff is, and I think we talked about this at the work session last week, last week. What is the timeline? Are we on a timeline to get this to council, Mr. Crooks?
So this is currently on the agenda for the zoning public hearing on April 26.
Which is when?
April 26, but that would be subject to planning commission's action today. So if council was to, or excuse me, commission was to recommend or, you know, take action to defer this as y'all's action, that would be something where it wouldn't go before planning, or excuse me. Planning commission, you all today, take action to defer this item, so defer action on this. It wouldn't go before county council at the April 26 meeting.
Is there...
But if you take action to make a recommendation specifically, such as recommendation of approval, recommendation of approval changes, recommendation of disapproval, et cetera, then it would go before county council at the April 26 zoning public hearing meeting.
County council expecting this on the 26?
Yeah, it would be on the agenda, so...
It's already on their agenda?
Yeah, so we would just notify them based on action that occurs today.
So input that we've received today, how would that align with the fact that it's already on the agenda for the 26?
For clarification, at the beginning of each year, the county council, just as the planning commission does, adopts a calendar for all of their dates. So the date for the zoning public hearing for April has already been adopted. As far as what items will go to them, we think we have a couple of days before we have to advertise for that meeting. So this specific...
So this is not on the agenda?
As in, not specifically there yet, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frye, for that. Mr. Chairman, I'll defer my other questions until I hear from other commissioners. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Dennis. All right, I'll do it. Okay, so listening to public, thank y'all all for being out here today. It really means a lot. I live up in the northeast area, and there was a question to ask earlier, who lives on rural area? I do not. However, I do have a farm up in North Carolina that I want to keep rural. I grew up in chicken houses and all that stuff. And then I joined the military, and this is where I call home now with my family. And I just wanted to say that thank you very much for coming out here because I can look through this text all day long, and some things make sense, some things don't. But I won't know until it affects each and every one of you, how it affects you, okay? So thank you for that. To staff, I was looking at a few things in here. And how does the new zoning district in the RU area to AG, HM, RT, R1 affect the subdivision of land for generational land transfer to the family members? That was one of the things that I found digging through some things over the weekend that I didn't like personally. And that does affect a lot of people in here, as we heard today.
Right, so assuming that's an area subdivision, so the family subdivision standard within this code. So makes it where you don't have to abide by certain development standards. You could subdivide off of an easement versus off of a constructed road. So as it relates to the RU district currently, so the rural zoning district, be a minimum 33,000 square feet or larger as required by DHEC. That DHEC standard would still apply in the current code in any case. As it relates to the change to the R1, it would be that same residential standard. So 1.33 in terms of density would be one unit every 3/4 of an acre or so. Then RT would be one every one and a half acre. So that density standard of 0.67 would be one every one and a half acre. HM would be a density standard of 0.33, which is one unit every three acres. AG would be 0.15, which is one every 6.7 acres or so. Every 6.67, excuse me, every 6.67 acres or so. So if you had, for instance, say, 10 acres currently, and you were zoned RU, you could potentially get 13 lots out of that. If you were looking at Homestead, for instance, you could get three, potentially, so...
Oh, Mr. Dennis, please, go ahead.
So if we, some of these that are going from rural to homestead, that actually hurts them if they have a couple of kids.
In that instance, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gilchrist.
So along those lines, Mr. Crooks, I heard some conversation about encroachment. And the... Just talk to me a little bit about, and I agree with the sentiment earlier that Richland County in the past has done a really good job with dealing with the encroachment. How are we seeing that now in the new zoning classifications?
Could you elaborate, Mr. Gilchrist?
Well, I'm just curious to know. In the various classifications that are being identified, just how does encroachment impact or not?
Let me think of it, be how something being zoned. Because within the zoning, you're going to have a variety of uses that could or couldn't be allowed. And then from that, you're going to have to abide by various development standards.
So you feel good that our current encroachment...
So this proposed code actually has something that our current doesn't in way of neighborhood compatibility standards. So that is a specifically new section within the code that we do not have under the 2005. So those look at where you have, say, a non-residential use or even certain types of residential uses where those are abutting or adjacent to either residential... uses, where those are abutting or adjacent to either residentially zoned properties or residential uses. So it looks at having a variety of other standards related to typically the performance of a use, as well as the overall form and scale of that use also. So it puts some limitations on the potential impacts that those could cause based on the performance or the form and design of that non-residential use.
Right.
So that's one thing specifically as it relates to potential encroachments, as you are alluding to, that wouldn't be able to be addressed in the current code.
Thank you for raising it, Mr. Price.
I'll connect to it.
Okay. And then my, and the staff just can make sure that I'm clear on this. All meetings that we've had in the county, whether it's been with the public, citizens, neighborhoods, developers, have all those meetings been public meetings? Meaning that can anyone attend those meetings? Have we had meetings in the county where the public has not been invited to come to those meetings about the LCD?
As far as I'm aware.
Okay. All right. So all I have for this deferment, Mr. Chairman. I'll be back in a minute.
Who else?
Mr. Bradham, I mean Chairman Bradham. I apologize, I had to step out for a moment. Are you asking us to ask questions? Would you please ask, repeat what you're asking us to do right now?
Discussion and questions.
Okay.
I indicated earlier that I had some comments, but I'd like to lay back, and I just want to hear from everyone else before I make any.
Okay, well, whenever it's my turn, I'll speak up.
We're ready for you.
Is it my turn? Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it. One of my concerns was that one of the constituents asked, where do we live? And it bothered me for this reason. Even though I live in Lake Carolina, I'm very, very concerned about protecting the community. And when I say that, I mean rural, urban, whatever you might want to call it, I am concerned no matter where my physical residence is. Another concern was I heard about clock and calendar. And some of you have already perhaps mentioned this. I personally don't feel the pressure of what county council might have on its calendar, because Mr. Price explained that well. I'm far more concerned about hearing the constituents. And I took notes as each one spoke today, and the last time we met, and a couple of things bother me. A long time ago, before COVID, I remember we had a public meeting, I believe it was at Dreer High School. I don't remember the exact time of that meeting, but one of the things that concerns me is that when we have these meetings at 3 o'clock, I am of the impression that we are excluding lots of working class people who really would love to be here to express their concerns. I'm not blaming any of you on council, I mean on this commission. But the other thing that bothers me is because of COVID, and it's no fault of any of us, I think that it's only fair to hear more from our citizens. You know, it's not necessarily a numbers game, but in my little notebook, almost everyone spoke against what is currently being proposed, this time and the last time. Now, there were some gentlemen here today, I think it was from the Forest Acres area, and they said something that really stuck in my mind. They said it's not so much a problem of the map as it's so much, as it is a problem of the text. Now, if it's true that there are some errors in the text, if it's true that it's not really user-friendly and the layover part makes it difficult for average Joe Blow citizen to receive that letter in the mail, go to the internet or whatever, and find what it actually means and where it actually impacts, then that's a concern. I know you didn't ask us to vote yet, I know which way I'm going to vote, but in the interest of hearing from the citizens, not just the ones that can take off from their jobs and come here, but from citizens that work nine to five and perhaps need an evening meeting, in the interest of correcting things that perhaps were not intentionally done unfairly, but things that may be confusing citizens, I think it's best to pull back, allow more time to correct things. And there was a one man that spoke to us on Friday. I apologize, I can't remember his name, but he's the new assistant to Mr. Price, I believe. And he spoke about the fact, and it really made me think about, the right question is not necessarily who benefits, but look at things in a different way. You know, some people talked about land that's been passed on from generation to generation, and their desire to want to subdivide it and pass it on to friends, not friends, but family members, and others that see it differently. It doesn't necessarily mean that one is right and one is wrong, we just have to realize that the developers are not the people that really make our community the best it can be. In my opinion, we really have to pay attention to the citizens. I don't live in the rural area, but I respect it greatly. I realize things have to change. But one of the reasons I wanted to be on planning commission years ago was because I wanted there to be planned intentional land development, not just willy nilly. So I, when it's time to vote, am not going to vote for us passing this on as it is right now. I'm personally going to vote for deferral so that we can get this thing right.
Chairman, if I may, just want to.
Gilchrist.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to go back to the map situation. Mr. Delage, can you walk us through, is there, is there a way that we can, on our computers in front of us, walk us through what the map currently looks like? Is that, can we do that?
I think we could pull it up and look at specific properties or areas generally. It just depends on kind of what you mean by.
Well, I heard a couple of references to the fact that people pulled up the map, they didn't really understand.
Yeah, Mr. Gilchrist, I think, thinking what you may be asking, Tommy, can you just be your citizen and go to our county website and kind of show the process, what we would go through?
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm asking.
To that. And also, if I just have a moment, Ms. Fryerson, first of all, thank you for the promotion, but the gentleman that you spoke about was Eric Jensen, the county, the assistant county administrator. I report to him, but thank you.
Oh, well, I think you may need, you may need a promotion, Mr. Price. Whatever sister can do to help a brother out.
All right, so we'll start out at our main webpage. We're actually, the location is down here, Vision for the Future. It can be clicked on either via the image or via the zoning. And that'll redirect you to the planning page. Down here below, we have the land, the different, of course, divisions that'll take you to their main homepages, but down here below, we have the land development code rewrite. It's got the adopted code. We do have the PDFs, but rather than going to the PDF, so you can have an interactive map to be able to actually zoom in and search specific properties. It works similar to our IMS. So, for example, it's running a little slow because it knows it needs to work. So you would pull it up, and if I could type correctly, at that point, it'll take you to specific addresses, and it's thinking, but just for example, 2020 Hampton, it pulls it up. It's within the city of Columbia, so it's not going to show a zoning layer, but the layers can be manipulated. Typically, the base zoning is by default, and then it has the overlay districts as well. And then some minor information on the side, different layers that could be turned on or off. It's not as inclusive as our IMS, because we didn't want it to lag down and slow the data. But of course, you could pull it up on either the zoning map to show the different layers, and then query other information on the IMS. So, and just for example, so this is I-2026. As you can see, the kind of the different parcels, if you click on them, it'll show basically your successor's information, what the current code is, or according to previous land development codes, a residential multifamily high density, the recommended zoning district, which is R6. And of course, it has the acreage and the TMS number as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Anyone else on the commission? Mr. Grady?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I spent a great deal of time this weekend looking over the map, looking over the code. Obviously, have listened to all the feedback that we've received today. And the conclusion that I think I've come to is that we may be talking past each other a bit. So I have some questions that I like to direct at staff, and this may be a little bit of a gotcha, so I apologize in advance. Just to step back, and this may be helpful for the people in the audience and others. One of the purposes of this land development code update and the attendant rezoning is to implement the county's comprehensive plan of 2015. Would that be a fair statement?
Yes.
So the question I have is, when I read through the comprehensive plan yesterday and other times, I felt like the map did not reflect the goals that were articulated in the plan. But on the other hand, I also realized that there is, in fact, for those of you who don't know, for the previous three years, I worked at the state housing authority, and was deeply enmeshed in the fact that housing in this county and throughout South Carolina is becoming less available and less affordable. And that those trends have only accelerated in recent years. So I understand the need for houses for people who are living here, for children who are leaving their parents' homes, for people who are coming to South Carolina for a better place to live. So the question, so I have a few snippets from the, from the, from the plan. And I will ask the audience to not freak out halfway through the quotes. The plan states that the county should, quote, "support higher residential densities in priority development areas." And I've asked the staff, how do you, how do you believe, or if you believe, this plan accomplishes that objective?
So as it relates to the primary investment areas, so those are specifically designated on the future land use map, there is 11 or so different priority investment areas. And so one of the things that we have tried to do with it, as it relates to the various principles that we use in for this mapping process itself, was in those areas, look at higher intensity zoning. So where you have places like, say, just to kind of pull one off the top of my head here, we'll see where, oh, so we're talking, he's going first. But just say, for instance, the intersection of, I don't know, pick a good one here, Lower Richland and Garner Sire. So it's one of those primary investment areas. So having an appropriate level of intensity that could be allowed through the zoning district, but also something that still is compatible with how the area has been growing, how the area's been developing, but still what is also that type of character that we expect to see there. So where you have something that's, say, predominantly a lesser developed area, lesser intensity developments. So for instance, that intersection in particular, where you have had some things that have been coming online, that have been growing, not going leaps and bounds above what is already there. So take, for instance, that lower portion of that intersection, where on the left-hand side, you've got a lot of current RSMD. The right-hand side, basically upzoning things to mirror that at R3 versus leaving it as, say, R1 or R2 in that capacity, where it still is compatible with what's there, but you're still upzoning it in a, in a way. Same way with some of the other priority investment areas, is you take it, we take it to as little, take it high as we think we could potentially recommend, with still being something that is relatively compatible, but is still something that, again, is compatible, but also, I'm going to say, could be an appetite for. You know, where it's not going to be something, something so outlandish that it's leaps and bounds beyond what you could otherwise expect.
So another quote from the plan, and again, I would ask you to pontificate on whether you believe this is being accomplished by this map. Does the map work to, quote, "increase the proximity of residential, commercial office and civic land uses, reduce trip distances, automotive travel and air pollution?"
I'd say as best it can. So I think one of the things that we've heard a lot of as part of this is, and thinking just in general, so where do those commercial uses then go? How does those then coincide with residential areas? So I think one of the comments we heard was about that mixed use or commercial encroachment into residential areas. So where do we then look at how that could play out? So being able to provide those various uses through those zoning districts as it relates to where we have established populations. So how do we then look at either having a lower level of commercial uses, or if there's already an area where it's kind of in and out of commercial, do you tie everything back together commercially? Do you leave it as kind of piecemealed residential, commercial? So what we've tried to do in a lot of cases with our recommendation then is, again, to the extent that it makes sense, upzoning those to commercial areas and then relying upon those neighborhood compatibility standards, where we do have those existing residential uses, those potential for residential uses, where you could still have those services there, but again, not where they're going to be so out of character, so incompatible with what's there, that you could still have them. So to an extent, we're doing our best with that one as well.
Okay, thank you. I have several more quotes, but I will just slide past those. So I would suggest that the choice that we face as a county is not solely between let real estate developers do whatever they want, wherever they want, and let real estate developers do absolutely nothing anywhere. And I wonder if the concern that has been expressed in this room quite clearly is a function of the fact that we are going down the same path we have for decades, that we are promoting automobile-based development, that clearly people are experiencing decreased quality of public services, people are, you know, finding all of these, these problems that they have, I think, internalized and have come to us today to say, things are not going the right direction. So I guess the final point that I have is that we need to figure out, I definitely have concerns that this map does not reflect the goals of the consolidated plan that were also discussed broadly and debated by council, debated by this commission. And, you know, when I look at, the solution is obviously not to see our population decline. I've, I grew up in the Rust Belt, that does not work. I've studied the overregulation of land use in California, that does not work either. And I would just say that I certainly hear the voice of asking for a delay. I will consider that, as I hear from my fellow commissioners, and would ask that we think about these issues more deeply. With that, I yield back, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to wrap it all into one. You know, going through here, I remember when we started this whole process, when I got appointed, I remember looking at the R3, R4 area, R2, and the minimum houses that we had for those acreage. And I remember we felt pretty good looking through there and gotten them even lower density. And then going through a few more things, talking to people, sitting out there, I've come up with looking at that table, you know, when we did it, I still don't remember the dual dwellings, the quadplexes and triplexes and townhomes type thing like that. I just, I still don't remember that. But it's in there. And, you know, I was looking through of how to incorporate that into the new map, such as taking it out of some of those other dense, or less dense areas and moving around, putting special regulations on them. And then I started looking even more into that table, and I was looking at lawn tree, pet control services, and the impact they would have. pet control services and the impact they would have for the HM and RT districts, because that's where a lot of people have some of these businesses out there. I was also looking at the farm, rural barns, areas for weddings, wedding venues, looking at people that grew small farms. Because this right here, it does take, like when I grew up, a farm is a farm. So we get to small farms and we get to large farms, chicken farms, I mean, a farm's a farm if you're growing stuff on it and you're producing for people. And then I started looking down through it even more and I was looking at, you know, how garden centers and retails for those AGs, HM areas, maybe RT, vehicle repairs for those areas, because it just gets to, some of that stuff I think should be out there and allowing people to use their zoning and their property that they have for whatever they want to use it. And then, you know, I even talk about the subdivision of generation of land. And then one of the other things I've had a lot of questions are, you know, and I did a lot of digging, looking back, you know, people were, one of them was, how does this new thing affect me? I can't have my boat in my front yard or I can't have it on the side of my house anymore. And I saw, I started doing digging on that and I found even in our old texts, you couldn't have it there either. So I mean, because I was straightforward like, well, why can't we do that? And then I had to go back and look at it. And so just kind of looking more and more, you know, as somebody that served military, I love the fact that people have their homes, they have their land, they can do what they want. And then the other fact is I became a realtor. And funny fact about realtors are, a lot of people think that, hey, we're out to build everything. In fact, realtors are about property rights, people's property rights. And I'm a real stickler for that. I love people's property rights. And the more I look at this, you know, and hearing from people and looking at it, it just, it doesn't sit well with me. It really doesn't. I don't think Richland County, even if we do this and we move forward, I just don't think Richland County is ready for the growth that could happen smartly if we don't look at it at the basis and build it smartly. If we don't look after our people, it's just not going to work. And that's kind of where I'm standing with it right now.
Mr. Chairman, I agree.
I got a
No, go ahead Dennis.
And, and I got a lot more stuff that, I mean, I could, but I, I think looking from here on out, we might need to just really dig into this.
And I just have some comments hopefully before anybody makes a motion, so.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman. No, I, I just want to echo both what Mrs. Frye and Commissioner Frye and Commissioner Dennis both have and Commissioner Grady. I, I mean, earlier I asked about the map, I mean, excuse me, the calendar and whether or not there is some urgent need for us to do this now in light of not accepting the information that we've received and use that as a basis for us going forward. Seems to me that the only urgency, Mr. Chairman, is for the fact that council has a public hearing scheduled for the 26th, but the agenda does not include this particular item. And so for me, I do think that as I stated at our meeting last week, it's important to make sure that anytime we hear from the public, that we take a minute to massage what we're hearing from the public, to ensure that the document that we want the public to live by is one that is comprehensive enough to address the things that we care about in the county. And so I too would be very open to, you know, looking at some way to not delay it, but to defer it until such time that we have an opportunity to incorporate some of this information that we've heard, both from last week and from this week. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I do have a quick question for staff. And Mr. Crooks, you can correct me if I'm wrong. You said some recent changes or corrections were made based on emails and phone calls that you had gotten. What were those corrections to or those changes? Do you remember that statement?
Yes, sir. So those were further updates to staff's recommendation based on some additional feedback that we received. So those were along, so a handful of properties along Old Tama that were previously being recommended for R2, changing to RT. And then one or two south of Eastover going from I think AG to RT. And then one property that was originally being recommended for the employment district, so EMP, recommendation for general commercial GC.
So in light of that, it sounds like even it's still moving and, and changing based on input and based on the input that we're receiving today. I also would kind of support stepping back a minute and addressing the concerns that are coming forward. My only question would be to the commission and, you know, when do we stop? When is it, when is it enough? This is so subjective, because again, no matter what we do, not everyone's going to be satisfied with it. I mean, that's, that's just, that's just a truth. So one of the things I want us to consider is, you know, how far do we push this out? How far do we defer until, you know, what time? And maybe that's something we can discuss amongst ourselves.
That's good.
Thank you. I mean, if there's nothing else right now, I'd go ahead and just share some of my thoughts and ask you to bear with me. I made some notes and we've been patiently listening for a long time and maybe haven't shared our perspectives as much just yet. So it's for good reason that this process has drawn so much attention. It impacts roughly 375 acres of land and over 100,000 individual parcels by assigning virtually every one a new zoning district. And commenting today, I don't mean to allege any ill intent from anybody who is a part of this process. I believe that a community that is not growing in good ways is probably a community that is unhealthy and dying. We need residential and non-residential growth that is manageable and responsible and growth we can be proud of. We need the many different elements of infrastructure provided by governments complement growth and to keep it manageable and responsible. Balancing these things along with our desire to respect property rights is not easy. The drafting and adoption of the land development code resulted in a complete total replacement of the prior code adopted 17 years ago. Naturally, it has created and will continue to create change and adjustment for developers and property owners and users, the true extent of which remains to be seen. The new LDC creates a, includes a zoning district equivalency table. We fought hard as a planning commission to see that that equivalency table was included in the land development code. Even following that table, the default new equivalent for most residential districts, meaning R3 through R6, is already going to be more dense than under the prior LDC. This is true even after this commission last year rolled back last-minute proposed additional residential density increases. Today, the business at hand is the fact that a new zoning map must be adopted to use the new zoning terminology and the new LDC. Very few, if any, exact equivalents exist. That being said, the amount of proactive upzoning, meaning more intense use, more permitted uses in this proposed map to something other than the closest new district to an existing district assignment seems to be much more than just what would be deemed by and large obviously needed to match existing uses and zoning assignments. The future land use map, which is part of our county's comprehensive plan and our actual current zoning map are two different things with two different purposes. If they were intended to be the same, they would be consolidated into one map. We should not be in effect replacing the current zoning map with the future land use map. See pages 24, 25 of the comprehensive plan wherein it is emphasized that the future land use plan is quote, "provided solely with the intention of providing guidance to local decision makers" and quote, "not intended to provide site-level guidance with regard to development decisions." There does appear to be an element of one fell swoop, somewhat aggressive upzoning in the proposed zoning map. This is an effort, and had, this has an effect of materially modifying existing practices, which involves the naturally increased time, effort, diligence given to typical individual rezoning applications, which involves a site-specific application, communications with staff, review and input and recommendation with the planning commission, hearing from the community and review and input and vote by council, which is often accompanied by community meetings and site-specific agreements as to development. I don't know that such a material change is wise or desired by council or residents. The comprehensive plan emphasizes at least twice that discretion should be used by both staff and decision makers and that ultimately quote, "rezoning decisions are legislative decisions made by the county council." This commission and county council pressed for the inclusion of the equivalency table found in the new LDC. My thought is that if any upzoning is to occur that does not align with that table, it should be a very limited scope such that it can reasonably be reviewed by key parties and discussed in a targeted way that creates minimal disruptions to the community's understanding of the thorough review and the level of site-specific interaction that typically occurs in rezoning requests. Staff provided us some data and an Excel spreadsheet. If I read it correctly, by their labeling, upzoning that was not equivalent totaled over 16,000 parcels and over 34,000 acres. Prior to serving on the planning commission, I was asked to get involved with a rezoning application of a large tract of land from rural to one of the residential districts. After weeks of communications between parties, including the county councilman, the residents and the developer, a compromise was struck and the parcel was upzoned from RU to RSE. The equivalency table says RSE is equivalent to R1. It is just now being developed into a neighborhood. It concerns me that the same parcel is now presented on the proposed zoning map as being further upzoned, not to R2, but to R3, which is two density districts away based on the adopted equivalency table. The same is true for three adjoining parcels. It triples the density from an average of .46 acres per dwelling unit to .17, providing for two, three and four family dwellings. These four lots comprise 84 acres. That would result approximately in 504 new units on those four tracts of land. So I also believe the new LDC defines the term multifamily in a way that is different from what most people would expect. As we heard today, two, three and four family dwellings are not considered multifamily as defined by the new LDC. They are in one way or another permitted by right in residential districts R2 to R6. Multifamily dwellings are an important part of a large community's housing needs. By their nature, they would be expected to create greater population density than single family dwellings. And as such, we need to look seriously at either how we define those terms or we need to review the districts and locations in which those two-plus family dwellings are appropriate and permitted in the principal use table of the new LDC. Or if we leave that stuff all the same, then we should consider more carefully where we put R2 through R6 on the zoning map. I have also, I have paused when I think that a large upzoning in bulk is proposed in conjunction with the, the new LDC's allowance for more dense clustering of houses with open space density bonuses. And that while I understand that some reserved open space have been or may be deeded into someone, I'm not sure who, other open spaces may only be reserved by placing a label on a map while leaving the possibility that those open spaces will later be subject to additional fill-in development. So I would think that with all those potential avenues for future increases in density, we ought not be aggressively upzoning en masse at this time. The now, the now-existing LDC is basically brand new and is a complete replacement of the old. I would think it wise to live with it for a while before upzoning en masse. We need to grow in good ways that our community can be proud of and we need development that supports that growth while not overwhelming us. While I thank the staff and others for their work on this ongoing necessary map project, I cannot in good conscience vote to approve the proposed zoning map, last updated on or about March 28th, 2022. If the map moves on to county council for a vote regardless of our recommendation, I implore staff and council to review the number of residential districts that permit some dwellings that are something other than single-family housing, to reconsider the impact of the lot size requirements for a dwelling in the AG, HM and RT districts, to otherwise exactly follow the adopted equivalency tables for all properties covered by districts listed therein, and to consider submitting any further multi-parcel requests to upzone or change zoning use types in small and reasonably related groupings that will facilitate staff, this commission, the public and county council in exercising the diligence and discretion described in our comprehensive plan. Thank you all for your patience. Any other, any other comments or notes for discussion? Mr. Price?
Yes, sir. You're going to send that to us, right?
But I, my statement? I can?
It'll be helpful, then take all the notes.
Okay.
All right, so what it seems like, I just want to make sure I point this out to the planning commission, just based on some of the discussion that you're having, it sounds like you want to look at this a little further before, you know, rather defer it so you can have some more discussion regarding this. Now, I want to point out, according to 26-52 E2 of the Richland County Land Development Code, within 30 days from the date that any proposed zoning amendment is first considered by the planning commission at a scheduled meeting, unless a longer period of time has been mutually agreed upon between the county council and the planning commission in a particular case, the planning commission shall submit its report and recommendation to the county council. The recommendation of the planning commission is advisory only and shall not be binding on county council. If the planning commission does not submit its report within the prescribed time, county council may proceed to act on the amendment without further awaiting the recommendations of the planning commission. Now, I read that, and this is, this is more from staff, throwing some suggestions out there. It sounds like you have a lot of things that y'all want to discuss, whether it be the mapping and some of the proposed zoning designations throughout the county, also looking at some of the text, I mean, we have to go back to that. If you defer today, it would be scheduled to come back before the planning commission on the, the first Monday of May, I think it was May 2nd, I'm not sure the date, but it would be coming May. Then it would be scheduled to go before county council. Of course, as I stated, county council could go ahead and pull this and take action on it, even if you didn't take any action on the second. My suggestion would be that if you decide to defer, that the chair meet with the chair of county council to discuss this, as I stated, and see if you can come upon a mutual date. I don't believe that, you know, I don't want to speak for council, but I believe that they'd be willing to wait until you're very comfortable in what you sent to them in your recommendation. I don't think they want you to just force something there, whether it be for or against. So I believe that they'll be willing to wait as long as it takes for you to work on this. Also, we would just, as a staff, we would ask that you be specific as to what it is that we'll be working on so staff can be a little prepared. And I believe that this is probably going to take, and I'll go back to when the last land development code was, was adopted by county council, we had a number of meetings with the planning commission. Usually, you know, evenings, there were just work sessions. So I think it would be best that we go ahead and establish a number of work sessions going forward, because I don't believe this is something, at least based on some of the comments that y'all have expressed and also from what you've received from the citizens of Richland County, that's something we can do at every, you know, directly scheduled meeting for county council. I'm just giving planning commission.
So potentially, how quick could council pull it up if they wanted to?
May.
Away from us?
May. They're May zoning public hearing.
Okay. What did we say that was? Is it third Thursday or fourth Thursday?
It's the fourth Tuesday of each month.
Fourth Tuesday.
That's what it's scheduled for. So that'll be the 24th. Thank you, Tom.
I mean, again, I don't speak for the commission as a whole as far as like what our will is on this matter. I, I don't personally, you know, I'm open to doing something other than just putting up a concrete wall and saying, you know, we don't want to talk about it anymore. you know, we don't want to talk about it anymore. Any have any other thoughts on the commission right now? About how to proceed? I mean, one way for us to start figuring things out, obviously, is for, for people to make motions and, and we can take votes on motions.
Mr. Chair, um, since you were asking for suggestions, this is not a motion. I think that our work session the other day was helpful. And as Mr. Price so accurately stated, there are a number of concerns that came out today from the residents and from the commissioners. And since this is just the early part of April, I suggest that we, as a commission, have another work session, or maybe you don't call it work session, um, to discuss these issues in time whereby we would be, um, willing to come up with some more definitive, um, decision right before the May meeting. So just another time that we get together as commissioners in April to work on this again. Or not work on it, but to air out some of our concerns, along with staff, of course.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Gilchrist.
Yeah, so I, I concur with, with Commissioner Frye and I listened very attentively to your list, which is extraordinarily comprehensive. So it will take a few work sessions to work through some of that. Uh, so yeah, I, I would support the fact that we try to have some time to, to meet prior to the, the May 2nd meeting. I'm open to that.
And, and I did speak with the chair of council, Chairman Walker, a couple, few days ago, and we, we indicated that we would want to speak again this week. So I'm, I'm happy to touch base with him as far as timing on things goes.
Yeah, whatever this decision comes from between the two of you, I'm sure I think council may have to take action on that, um, to, you know, defer to the next public hearing, which would be the one in May. I was already making sure I'm saying that. So if you would just advise staff of what comes about from that, um, appreciate it.
Any, uh, can, can any of my voice, if you have an objection to us looking to, you know, conduct one or more work sessions before our May regular scheduled meeting? I'm not, not hearing any objection at course of action. So, um, if we want to go that route, I can speak with Chairman Walker and, uh, work on a schedule and then circulate, uh, proposed dates for work sessions among the commission, uh, for April. Okay. I guess we take a motion to defer?
You would, yes, you would need to take, you would need to take action regarding this, which you have before you. And then you can come back and if you want to talk about the dates or get the more specifics of what we'll be talking about at the work session, we can do that afterwards.
Here, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Frye has made a motion to.
Okay. I so move that we, the planning commission, defer action on this Land Development Code until such time as we, as commissioners, can have additional work sessions prior to the May, our regular May meeting. And if I may add, um, in the interim, we also ask that, of course, you and Chairperson Walker of County Council continue your discussions.
Thank you. Motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We have a second. Staff is ready to take a roll call vote, please.
Sorry about that. All right. So the motion, the motion was for deferral of case 22 dash 001 MA. Um, that will go to, it'll be scheduled for the May 2nd meeting. Um, those in favor of that motion, Yonki?
Aye.
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Brannum?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Gilchrist?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
All right. In the manner, in the manner of most lead on Kansas.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries. Um, don't, don't have anything else under other agenda items? Chairman's report, nothing at this time?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Again, for those who have remained with us today, um, because the planning commission did not take any action, there will not be a public hearing on the 26th of April. No, no cases.
Okay. No, no county council zoning public hearing on April 26th.
There's no, there are no items to bring forward.
Okay. Because this commission deferred. Okay. Thank you. Um, planning directors report. Anything else? Mr. Price?
No, sir. Um, but I still think, um, we still probably need to get more specific as to what we will be looking to do at the work sessions, what items we'll be looking to take up. And again, as I think, as I stated, I believe, just in my opinion, it's probably going to take a few work sessions, um, with the, with the planning commission. So if y'all will make sure you establish probably the time that you're going to have devoted to it for each case, and also again, what specifically we'll address at each of the work sessions.
We can, we could work up something in writing and just circulate it amongst the commission so that staff is aware of what we want to tackle in advance?
Yeah, the sooner you get it to us, the better. We can kind of help prepare the documentation as necessary.
Okay. Something for Mr.?
Does staff have like a run-in tally of stuff that the public sent us? Because I mean, I got my own list, but if we're working it, like, let's work it.
Yeah.
Okay. Could, and could y'all bring that to the table as well?
Yes.
And I'll type up my list and email it.
All right. Thank you. Um, all right. Now, uh, last item on the agenda is other items. If there's nothing further, uh, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
All right.
Have a second.
Second.
All right. Seconded. Staff, would you please take a vote, motion to adjourn?
We have a motion for adjournment. Um, those in favor, Yonki?
Aye.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Brannum?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Gilchrist?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you.